Monday, June 27, 2016. I call the Potter County Commissioners Court. Today we have Barry Loving from Church Christian Church. We will do our implications, so please stand and raise your hand before the benches.
That's great. God of all creation, we come before you today thanking you first of all for a new day of life. A new day to come and breathe and do your business for Potter County. You know, God, that each day we must start this day full of your spirit. So we ask that your spirit rest upon each of us before we do anything. And as we gather, may we remember that humanity is valuable. And may we treat one another with respect and kindness. And no matter what goes on in this room today, may you bless what happens here. And may you continue to encourage us to be instruments of peace. And may we seek your will and everything we can empower our leaders and protect them. This is our prayer and the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state and to God, one indivisible.
All right, number one is regulation of amendments from the June 13, 2016 Potter County Commissioners Court meeting. If anything changes or going into amendments, if not, so working on it. And two, budget amendment, to consider an act upon those budget amendments for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. One that you had in your agenda, we have added another one this morning as the last amendment. So if you feel needed, you want to explain those.
What are your implications, this special one? Right then, good Friday, gentlemen. Each grade, Carrie. It was a $15,000 grant, and I'm not sure who it's owed.
It was from the Texas Indian Forest Service.
And then it looks like some of that got spotted to capital as well as just operating income. Is there something in particular you were buying on the capital side?
Yes, ma'am, the line 15 today, the set of education tools today.
Okay. Thank you.
Second item on our audit, you know, just on our legend, the grant legend, so it's just reclassifications. And then one that I handed out this morning, Judge Johnson requested some extra help to help me get part of that through the change of software.
Need some help in entering information into the system. I think veterans don't have time to do this, so just need some extra help instead of maybe four, maybe six weeks.
Okay. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments for the 2015-2016 fiscal years presented.
I have a motion and a second all in favor, Judge Ryan. Vouchers to consider an act upon approval of the payment of vouchers. As of Potter County Office of Office for a period of June 8, 2016, to June 22, 2016. Check numbers 1692343169427, and wire transfers 7373744, and the amount of $2,831,490.25.
I move we approve the vouchers as presented.
Second for discussion, Judge, I just have one question. Page nine of 26, and Vicki, this may be a question for you. It looks like check number 169329 Fairley Group. There's a few line items, but notably the 15,000 professional services. I know we recently approved some of them for them. This is just a lot of this general admission, so will you remind me what they're doing for the county in terms of professional services?
He's actually a Steve La, he's actually a consultant, not just an agent. He's actually a consultant for the county.
That was, okay. So these are his fees for the fiscal year?
Yes.
Now, also I have one question on page five. Bottom, 169294, Allied 100 Professional Shields. There's a kind of cost of these particular shields. Can you explain the difference in the prices here? One's $35.98, the other one's $830.
Fire mannequins?
Fire mannequins.
Fire mannequins?
I don't have it in front of me, but we bought CPR mannequins to replace the ones that were damaged in the fire. And the $839 one should actually be mannequins, not the... The $35 is a face shield that goes over them while we're doing, while we're using them in class. And the 800 is actually a set of mannequins.
How many W's do you give for that?
We got 16.
16?
For that total.
That's a good price.
We bought eight adults and eight infants, so.
Okay.
I have to get that clarified, thank you.
How many are cheap?
Okay, I have a motion and a second all in favor, raise your hand. Looking for the treasuries report, do you recognize the money in the treasuries report?
Okay, we have a few things to talk about. First of all, this review our totals this morning and our investments at this point. I have a $5 million in cedars that will mature March 31, 2017, and it's earning .65. And I have a $2 million cedars that matures September 29, 2016, and it's earning 5.25. Then in Texpool, we have $399,181.88, earning .37. Texpool Prime, I have $51,320.74, earning .57. Texas Class, I have $6,032,134.23, earning .64. I was contacted by Emerald National Bank a few weeks ago, and they were offering, we could pretty much choose whether the money market account or cedars, however we want to do it, and they would pay us 70 basis points. So after visiting with them and my investment committee, I decided to have them increase our interest on our general fund, just the general checking account, so that our entire balance could be included in that 70 besides adding additional money. So they increased our collateral to 40 million. This morning, the total overall balance, not just general, is 33.1 million at ANB. So they collateralized this at 40 million. Our checking account this morning has $30,66,811.66, and that's earning the 70 basis points. So those are the changes that have, we've had in investments this month, so that's really a good thing. As you notice, with, you know, what I've given you as far as our interest earned, the market has stayed pretty stable with all this going on with the euros in the UK, and so the prediction is, I was in an investment conference last week, and, I mean, they just knew it wasn't going to pass. Just wasn't even anything to consider, just wasn't going to happen, and it passed. So the prediction of everything I've read so far is we can expect volatile markets. Well, so far we've stayed stable. So, and this whole transition thing with the UK can take over two years. So it's, you know, we've got the time period to kind of see what's actually going to happen.
So, Leanne, I do have a question on the dollars that you requested to maybe transfer over to the ANB account to get the 70 basis points. Did you indeed transfer any over, or you did, it sounds like you just reallocated it.
I did transfer.
Okay.
Actually, probably about 8 million by now.
Okay.
Originally, no, originally I did 10 million to start out with. And then last week I moved another three just for our general operating payroll and stuff coming up. So that's why just the checking account, just our general fund is 30 million.
And where did that transfer come from?
From Texpool and Texpool Prime Bank. But I did leave our totals in Texas Class because it was still our...
Right, okay. And then the other two cedars that you started with are locked in for maturity dates.
Why?
Right, okay.
And they did offer even cedars, and if we needed to, you know, have the liquidity, they would not penalize us for it. But I just thought we would get it if they covered our code.
So a nice turn around the bank water money.
No, I just, I loved it. It's been a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Number five, to recognize insurance spending report. Is Kay here?
Kay's here.
Is there anything significant you want to talk about, or you just want to come up here and say hello?
Hello.
Good morning.
I did want to draw your attention to the line item for tax weekly claims run report dated 6/10. As you will recall, a few months ago, brought to your attention that we were expecting a very large claim where a team was being put together, as we understood it in Houston, for one of our participants. And this particular line item does include a large claim for that claimant. I'm not sure at this point whether there will be further claims. It's my understanding this may be it for now, but I am watching that very closely.
Thank you, Kay. So recognized. Number six, Potter Randall Appraisal District. Jim and Jeffrey, would you all please come on up? To recognize the outgoing Chief Appraisal Officer, Jim Shilber, and also to welcome the incoming Chief Appraisal Officer, Jeffrey Daggler.
Good morning.
Jim, we have a certificate for you, just for appreciation of all the years. This is for 34 years of faithful service as a Texas assessor, plier, and chief appraisal person.
Oh, thank you.
He's going to love it. This is the new guy. I want you to introduce Mr. Daggly.
Yes, it's a pleasure to introduce Jeffrey Daggly. We were giving that he graduated from Denver, he takes us down to the...
Hey, we already talked about that. We're good, we're good.
But Jeffrey's been with us about 11 and a half years. He's currently serving as the Director of Appraisals, and he's done a great job in that capacity. The board of directors, which all appoint for both Potter and Rand County's through the process. We took some other candidates and interviewed, and felt Jeffrey was the best candidate. He's going to do a great job, and we're just excited for him, excited for the staff. We think he'll do a great job for you guys.
He had a good teacher.
Well, he overcame a lot, but I'm kind of like that dummy back there. But anyway, I do want to express this, my appreciation of his years to work, certainly with you, Judge Tim, Charity, Taylor, and Earl Office, what a great, you are blessed to have a true professional in that. Julie in the county clerk's office, the Deeds, we couldn't ask for a better cooperation and professional team. Y'all do a great job with that. It's truly been a pleasure to work with you guys and miss you guys.
In your retirement, enjoy it.
Thank you.
Hang out with those grandkids a little bit.
I actually took them to the Rangers game. We lived it, and we blew it.
I happen to be a Red Sox fan. However, we're all talking about the Knicks.
Forget him for that.
I was sitting next to a man and his wife from Massachusetts. I tried to show them some humility from Texas, but they didn't show me much humility.
I can't imagine.
From Boston.
We go to the other two teams.
We do.
He mentioned Friday, he didn't say nothing else. I was terrified, I'm sorry.
Jeffrey, if you have any questions, you feel free to call us.
That's you all the same.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, construction project change orders to consider an act upon the following. A, allowing the facilities director to process individual construction project change orders under 50,000 with cumulative total of change orders not to exceed 25% of the original contract price as outlined in LGC Section 262.031. Tendency items that are not specific to the construction project or professional architect and engineer fees require a recommendation with the committee to Commissioners Court for approval. Copies of the final change order authorizations and budget approval will be kept in purchasing with the original contract. Individual construction project change orders, $50,000 and over, will be brought before the Commissioners Court.
Okay, I just said, as a purchasing agent, if I have to make this, consider an act upon this recommendation. I feel like in light of all the construction projects that this is a recommendation that we need to take as a precaution.
We had a discussion about that. We all agreed that that would be what we need to do, so I'm going to recede to allow the above recommendations to be added to the current purchasing policy procedures manual. So if that's okay, we have a motion and a second on this.
I have a quick question, Judge, Carrie, just to make sure you're okay with these changes as well. Okay, I mean, I realize there's a meeting, then I just, I got a short briefing on it, so I wanted to confirm a few things.
And just per outlined in multiple government code, 262, so that causes the direction of the...
The change is actually increased.
Yes, just back in 2009, Carrie, it's a 2009 construction project, it was 25 in terms of my... Or liability. A lot of times projects require some timing, and due to the general conditions, a lot of times it's definitely in a situation where it needs to act and it needs to be able to do that, so that's why I make a recommendation outlined in 262 to increase that to 50,000.
Judge, you were in the meeting, was there a...
A lot of it was in mission.
You were in the commission, and you're...
I agree.
You're in agreement.
I think it parallels what I threw out to state.
Yes, it does. We were able to contact some other counties, and it's parallel, like the commission kind of said, it's parallel, it's consistent.
Okay, and then Vicki, when the, should this, we pass this, when the changes are made to the purchasing policy, will you send that back out to the court so we have the latest policy?
Well, right now, I'm not sure exactly what policy says 50,000, so that's some utter inconsistency. So I needed to make sure that we have it written in the actual minutes to show 50,000 is the main question.
So what is item B?
It's just to make that fully clear for clarification that it is 50,000.
Okay.
Instead of increasing it from that 25 that at one time it's designated. So I don't know if it's consistency, but this right here, we are revising the manual. And as I make those changes, we will have, as soon as it's adopted, you guys will know all those changes.
I make a motion to approve these as discussed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second all in favor, Judge Ryan. Page 5, so let me page that. Number eight, fire station number three, to consider an act upon request to move funds from the fire station number three. Continue to go up to the fire station number three grocery list, add the fire furnishings. Good morning. Good morning.
We are complying with the policy you presented. We'd like to transfer $24,519.52 since I left that off in the paperwork I gave you to cover some additional furniture things that we need for fire station number three. The money's in the contingency fund, we're not running it out real well or anything else. We had a committee meeting last Tuesday and discussed this.
So I do have a question on, there's a partial fitness equipment that is now omitted in the change.
Yes, ma'am.
And I haven't seen any new renderings than what was presented to support some time ago. I'm visualizing the second floor.
No, it's on the, the fitness room is on the first floor.
Okay.
And we're going to, we're going to try to purchase it out of some of our regular funds. We're going to move some of the equipment around, so some of what we're going to buy won't actually be at station three. We're going to move it back to fourth, seventh, and third and five, organize better what George thinks we need.
And then I see a kitchen refrigerator, originally 800, then up to 1,200 roughly. Are you looking at a bigger capacity, or what has changed?
It's a little larger capacity, and the prices went up a little bit. Also, the utility washer and dryer, we had planned on just buying the very plain stuff, like what I had in my house. And when we got to ADA, it turns out that the openings for the washer and dryer have to be between a certain height and a certain height at the bottom of them. So we had to go to the front load, the front load washer and dryers, and we went to Lowe's, which is where purchasing said to go. And we picked out their least expensive set of dryer washer and dryer.
And then the additional items at the bottom, those were not included in the original allocation, so office furnishings, classroom furnishings, those are additional things?
Yes, ma'am.
100% additional. The, it looks like the audio, let me make sure I'm reading this correctly. And I apologize, because I'm not in these individual meetings, so I'm asking, you guys know I certainly want to be sensitive to that. The classroom audio and video, who is going to be maintaining that downstream? Is that IT and our audio visual? Okay, okay. If you guys feel good about the equipment that's going in, and we can make the... Carrie, do we have a total dollar now of where we are on this project now? If you don't have it now, you can give it to me.
Yeah, I think I know, but I'll say to you the exact numbers.
This doesn't affect, this doesn't affect the total balance?
Right, yeah, no, and again, because I'm not in those individual meetings, so I may, again, be asking things you may know.
Give you the total balance and anticipated balance of the contingency or...
I'm just looking at the total budget costs.
A lot of damage.
Yeah, and that's okay if you don't have it now.
Within your last two months of construction, right now, if these changes go through, you'll have a projected 49,000, around 49,000 back to your contingency. Out of the grocery list money, we do have line items that we might spend the funds on, so that will be coming back to the court as well.
Yes, and just... Mike, will there be an opportunity for those of us that are not on the committee to do a walkthrough at some point when it's safe to get into the building?
Right now is a good time.
Okay, so we just need to call you in the meeting and schedule that, are you there?
Yes, give us a call, I'll be glad to meet you out there and walk you through.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay.
And we're in our shoes that it's still rugged again.
Sure. Who's on that, who's on our committee, Judge, Sheriff, Commissioner, Judge?
I move that we allow to transfer $24,519.52 for contingency, construction contingency fund, to the grocery list for fire station three.
Okay, I have a motion and a second all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, Texas courthouse stewardship award of honor to acknowledge and accept the Texas Land Top Association and Texas courthouse stewardship award of honor and monetary gift presented by the Texas Historical Commission to Potter County, the outstanding stewardship leader of Potter County courthouse. Mike, this was quite a deal, huh?
That is, that's the highest award you can win from Texas Historic Commission. This program, program started back when at that time President Bush, Governor. We started the program in order to help counties understand how to better maintain their buildings, whether they're restored or not. For many years, I've watched many counties walk up and get that award, and some of the Potter County would get some of the criteria for you to get this. You had to have 40% courthouse 100%, you had to have a peremptive deed covenant signed with the state. And these three years completed, they come in, they inspect your buildings. They were here last October, they went to inspect a building. So the award that you're receiving today is for the stewardship and maintenance of the building. So really, all of the things needs to go to the technicians that we have, the janitorial staff, the grounds crew, they recognize the entire staff. In turn, you every single monetary gift of $1,000 from the state, Texas Historic Commission, Texas Land Title. I'm here to present that to you.
That's good, this is the award that I got. I was supposed to be there, but they didn't tell me that until like two days before, so I couldn't go. But this is the award. I thank you for the job, well done.
Let me, let me say something, I have to, I'm fresh, remember. The very first award going on this building was the Spirit preservation award presented by the Downtown Emerald Inc. Second was the Downtown, Texas Downtown Association's Presidential Award for Preservation presented by the Downtown Association. Preservation Heritage Award presented by Preservation Texas. The 30th Annual Platinum Reconstruction Award for Complete Preservation presented by the Building and Design Construction Magazine.
Yes, so we have five.
And we got a thousand bucks to spend however we want. Much, much.
Judge, are we going to evolve with the press release or anything? That's a really big deal. I mean, I don't, a lot of times when they give these awards, they give you a template of a press release to maybe get out to your local media. And I always, my brain certainly always goes to our website, because there is a lot of traffic there. I don't know if that's a logo that we could get somewhere to kind of plug and play, but I...
I hope Judge can take care of that, but Mike, will they tell you anything about the press release or anything?
We, I mean, we can certainly craft one, it wouldn't take much to craft one, but I don't, Judge, that's certainly, you're wrong this month, but you were... But I just think, I feel like it's a big deal, and it doesn't happen in this area very frequently. So.
Okay, what makes that happen?
Has there been any discussion on the $1,000 and how it'll be used? Because I kind of feel like it should be for the employees, something, if we have restrictions on it.
Do there are restrictions on how that, how can we spend?
Use your sage discernment, have, it should be something nice for all the people that you mentioned, Mike.
A little park? Are there little parks or...
Be a good party.
Should do that. All right, thanks, Mike, I appreciate it. Number 10, easement agreement to consider an act upon agreement with the City of Amarillo Granting Potter County as permanent easement installation.
Good.
Good morning.
This is for a little strip of Longview County Street where we're installing fire, we're moving on to city properties.
Since it's on their property, do they look back in terms of pricing since they're buying the usage from us at all, the contract with the City of Amarillo?
No, that agreed to second.
Separate, okay, I was just interested to know if this is part of the negotiation. I make a motion that we approve the City of Amarillo Granting Potter County's permanent easement for fiber installation.
I have a motion and a second all in favor, Judge Ryan. Can we just sign this one? Okay, number 11, Texan I-40 Frontage Road access to Farm Market, Farm Market 2381, Bushel 020, with foregone discussion on Texan Commission Church.
Put it on the computer. Your monitor, rather. Okay. It's been a year, year and a half ago, I started receiving phone calls from citizens and school district, Bushland. And their concern is the traffic congestion for, that happens along the frontage roads and I forty there in Bushland. As you know, the grade school, middle school are south of the freeway and on the west side of that Bushland, twenty-three.
I think it's twenty-three eighty-one.
Yeah, twenty-three eighty-one. And then you go north and the high school's up on the east side of that highway. Now, this is a text dot project because the citizens out there didn't understand to be rolling to what roads. They started calling me. And I told them it was text dot and they said, well, we've talked to them and they don't want to do anything. And so I talked to Ford Price and we'll give them a call and they started, they started getting interested in this project. So what the, this initial meeting was, was we had myself, four people from text dot superintendent of schools from Bushland, we had Brittany Hottashell, the judge from Randall County because that Simmons Road goes south into Randall County, which is really bad once it gets into Randall County. And that's another concern that people have. And that is, once it leaves Fourth Street, I believe, it becomes county road. So there is some responsibility on the road south, less than a half mile. So anyway, what they're, what we're looking at possibly doing is putting four-way stoplights at the frontage road on the north side and the south side of I forty. And then to make that work right, they're going to have to change those frontage roads so that they will be one-way going the same direction as, as the freeway. So that's, that is just in the infancy stages. What they're going to do is draw plans, then they'll be going up to citizens for, for meetings to get input from everybody out there, if we can get people to come and give their input. There's some people that are going to be affected by these changes.
Is there small ones right around there? Is there not?
No. And there's proposal for another great big development north and west of this, just north of the church and back in west of this highway.
For more homes?
More homes, it'll be like seventy to ninety homes. So how we, how they're going to get here, they're going to have to go back down twenty-three eighty-one somehow or exit. So we need to, that's going to become a disaster at some point, but we need to watch how that traffic flows. But anyway, this is really a problem and the folks out there are wanting something done. And so I just wanted to let you know what's being discussed and we'll keep you informed as what, what the next step is. But right now, all, all it is is discussion.
So just for the record, the frontage roads are currently two-way. And I'm only saying this because I know it, but I'm trying to buy some time for HR because he wants to go play golf. So I'm just.
Don't worry about it.
So they're both two-way right now.
Right.
I think it would be good to go one-way, but Stephanie lives there and she says no.
Oh, okay. What's the problem is, you know, Indian Hills comes part of the way to Blessings Road and Blessings Road. That's how you get down into, then up to the frontage road. Otherwise, you're going to have to go up to, wind through that division or up to the, what's that, what's the road out there north of the high school?
Jimline.
Jimline, yeah. But anyway, this change of one, two-way to one-way would go from Harnot to Atkinson. Atkins, which way is this?
Atkins.
Which is, we have the experiment station right out here. And those folks have to go three more miles to Atkinson and come back to get to the station. So I, there's going to be some real interesting discussions, I think, when this does become a proposal.
When will they start discussing this?
They're going to start drawing preliminary plans right away, so.
Commissioner G, since the roads are certainly so close to the highway, do we foresee backing up the highway? Anytime there's stoplights right by the highway, I even think of even just Saucy before that was the change.
I don't know if there's that much traffic. They've done a study on how many traffic.
It's roaming over there. I mean, maybe not today, but maybe five years from now, maybe. And with that new addition, so that might be.
Really, that's, yeah, but the new addition's going to hit it. Really, there's more roads south and Randall County is going to have to do something with that because it's a death drive. It's hard to get two cars down that road south of Bushland.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Number twelve, local government, full question to provide update on a local government question. I'm sure you have.
The LGC met this past week, June twenty-second, and several updates. I just, as a matter of practice, just kind of always add this on to keep us all up to date. The text dot streetscape project, some of that will include Potter County properties. So Judge, I'm, make sure you know, but the contractor is selected and they're moving forward. And so I know that some of that is slated for maybe a side of our district courts, I remember correctly. But anyway, contractor selected and that's moving forward. The convention center parking garage, it's actually moving ahead of schedule with some of the weather. And one of the things they shared was it is hard to envision, but it will actually be finished before the properties that are going up now. So you see a lot of steel and, and the work went around for even the XL property, but the parking garage will be finished. There was a lot of discussion on the parking garage about selecting the technology that's going to go inside it. Because one of the philosophies was this would be a parking garage of the future and how people can pay on their phone, pay with kiosks, kiosks and other opportunities to get out of the parking garage fairly quickly because there's seven hundred and fifty spots in there. So should a venue be built and there's that amount of traffic of how to get people out quickly. And really, some of the technology that I think a younger generation kind of even expects, I shared with them, well, they call it vehicle detection, I think is the word. And so there's some type of monitors on every spot so that, and I don't know if this will be approved, this is part of what was discussed, so that on your phone, you could download and see what, where the parking spots were. If it was the second floor or the third floor, so when you went in, you kind of had a plan and you weren't circling the parking garage the whole time. But part of that was the vendor selection. And then they're going to get to a point of picking who's going to manage the parking, whether that's a third-party group or whether that's the city of Amarillo, staff there and helping people swipe their cards and get in and out and ingress and egress. So the parking garage is coming. The hotel is ahead of schedule and you'll see some of that work probably as you're driving throughout the day. There's a lot of discussion on the impact of the baseball stadium for obvious reasons. And the last time the LGC met, the direction given by the LGC to the Arab city manager, Terry, was formalize a letter of intent. So we as a city, we as an LGC body knew who was going to go in the stadium before you built it and designed around what their needs were and obviously who that team would be. He announced at the LGC meeting that they were in, in discussions and negotiation with the city of San Antonio as well as publicly discussed. And they're not moving forward with a letter of intent, they're actually moving forward with a long-term agreement. So they're bypassing the letter of intent phase and working on a letter of agreement. There was some discussion because when they opened it up for public questions, there's a gentleman in the audience, there, there's a lot of uncertainty of whether this will have to go to a vote, to the voters of the city of San Antonio, or whether their city council can make that decision on their own. According to what Terry provided in that meeting, their city council could make that decision on their own. They appear to be on board and they were progressing, that's the information he had. And an audience member, you know, has his phone out and says, I'm looking at the front page of their paper and it says it has to go to a vote. So there was a lot of confusion of really what it ultimately had to do with, what he shared was he was reporting what he knew. So I think that's more to come. So I'd encourage you to kind of stay involved and maybe read the San Antonio paper. But interested, I thought this was kind of interesting. So our interim city attorney, Mick, is actually from San Antonio. And so he is back and forth. And so I tell him often that he always has to have our city hat on. But there's a lot of discussion around that and the timeline. The goal is for completion and opening spring of eighteen. So that is still the goal, a contract, build. And the reason I brought that question up is contractually, there are, there's some language that ties the city and the hotel together if this should go up, whether, there's occupancy rates that are part of it. And Les had, Les Simpson had a lot of questions about that and what those contract terms were because it's been some time. So they're going to send that back out to the group, to everybody's just aware. I, I kind of equate it to liquidated damages. I'm, I'm sure that's not the legal term at all, but if it's not built, I'm remembering a figure of a thousand dollars, I'm remembering a thousand dollar figure. So they're getting that language to refresh everybody's mind that spring of eighteen. Bob Cowell shared that originally their plan was to have it designed, inspected out and then start the demolition, but now with this different contract term of events, they're actually going to start the demolition on the Coca-Cola property as we know it. So you'll probably see that start to happen without this long-term agreement in place. And so some of that is to alleviate that time and to help offset the spring of eighteen. So more to come, but I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that discussion and it did get a lot of media attention as well. The next meeting is scheduled for July twentieth and it's at eleven o'clock. This meeting is a little different, so if you would like to attend, I certainly encourage you to. We just need to make sure we post it if there's more than three of us. But we're starting the meeting at eleven. It will be at a different location, it won't be at the city, but we're going to have an opportunity to tour the three, well, the three big projects, the hotel, the XL property and the parking garage. So if you think you can attend, if you'll just let me know so I can make sure they know you're coming, we post, we have enough hard hats. But we won't always have that opportunity to do that. So if you'd like to, I'd like to certainly extend that to you. But we're going to start at eleven that day. I think there'll be some small business and then we'll, most of the time will be allocated for the tour. And that will be public surgery too, so I think anyone would like to participate.
That's my head. Thank you. Number thirteen, Potter County projects. Do you have a report on the various Potter County projects? If any, if necessary.
Just a quick, the core fairground here, roofing projects out there on the Rex Baxton building, they're approximately seventy-five percent completed with it. The Cody building, we'll say that probably fifty-five percent completed with it. If you recall, one of the issues that we discussed with the tri-state paragraph was if we have any permitting replacement, the county was sure that within fifteen fifty. And if the project exploded out, we brought in an engineer and they said there was not any. When we first started the project, we actually found a man within the first week, the more of the damage down on the south end of the project. We had received a projected cost, an RFP from the contractor of what this would cost, and it's actually a pretty good cost. So what we've done is we've looked at two methods, either repair or replace structural measures. So we'll be doing either or as we could go down through there. They are slated to all be completed, everything out there, no later than the last day of October. The Santa Fe building, your elevator car project, car number two is slated to be completed here within the next few weeks. They have already, they run two crews on that project right now, so everything's kind of getting back on track. They have completion of it the last day of October. Your terracotta project, we start staging that currently this week. Then we anticipate a sixty-day timeframe in that project, winter permitting to have it completed. Our station three, your original substantial was the end of June due to the weather days booked in the contract and free that I allowed. Went from latter part of June to July twelfth, then to July fifteenth. Right now, your substantial completion is slated for, we know it is July fifteenth, but talking with contractors, I had a meeting with them after last Friday, August the twelfth is when we hope to have substantial completion. At that time, we will do our architectural barrier review of the state. Andy, have you anything on fire station five you'd like to make aware of?
We are working with the task review on it and starting to work with City Code on getting the plans for the restoration done.
Your sheriff department projects, this week I will receive a one-hundred percent construction document with opinion of cost. We, I have a two and a half week turnaround on this, so we'll be reviewing the documents, hopefully having everything ready. We will be bringing that back to the committee in the court, Commissioner Gia, per your request, look those documents up. Anytime you want to come by, just let me know and I'll sit down and go through it with you. That's kind of where we stand.
The extension office project?
I talked to Nick last week when everybody got back into town. Him and Craig, all I know is that they said that they were getting ready to equip out there. They came this week, I thought it was last week, I asked him and he said he was talking to you about.
Yeah, I think he was out of town when we were reaching out, so I.
Yeah, he was on vacation as well. I'll be back and check in then. I'll get a few minutes, you know. One thing that we were waiting on after was the ground to come up, it was a little hotter than what it was back in the school and we had all the rain and stuff. We talked last week about everyone's state.
I just, I know that they have some summer activities out there for the youth that they're planning on using some of the properties, so just to make sure that they have some lead time to make those changes, whether it's.
We call, we call.
Just to make sure that they, I know they want the work done, so this will certainly take priority, just so they have time to move what their activities are. It wasn't on this.
Number fourteen, formal bid renewal to consider an act of renewal, formal bid number one zero nine two dash one four, transportation and storage of human remains with A to D mortuary service for additional one-year term from August one twenty sixteen through July thirty-first twenty seventeen. Pricing is unchanged from previous time to current.
Yeah, this is just a, a note that we would require the county commissioner's court to contact if the department's ever been satisfied with certain things. It's actually very well, very well received by them and outstanding job. I believe, is there anybody here that said something about showing up if there was any comments, but I hope it wasn't necessary because everything's good.
Is there a contract that we have in the pack aside in?
The actual proposal is just a.
Okay, well, there's no contract. Nothing assigned or anybody.
Is this just body removal or is this cremation?
This is just, this particular one is just for the body removal. The cremation is still under the threshold of under fifty thousand, so there's talk to monitor that and there is a possibility we'll be taking it out for part in the future.
I'm surprised it's only fifty thousand.
Yeah, we've been trying to monitor that. I think it'll make five hundred.
They're five hundred.
So it would take, you know, five years.
We have.
But, no, I just said, I, I was shocked that it was under fifty, just because the price point was five hundred. Yes. It is for a twelve-month period, so right now we're on monitor. We're anticipating, it's on my radar, the senior buyer, the criminal, to be five years.
I don't know that you can beat that price.
Oh, yeah, the price is outstanding.
I make a motion to approve renewing formal bid number one zero nine two dash one four, transportation and storage of human remains with A to D mortuary service for an additional one-year term.
Sir.
Have a motion, enter second, all in favor, raise your hand. Always talk to the rest of the human. Fifteen equipment purchased to consider natural purchasing TNT rescue tools. ESLCC dash two zero dash M two eight volt battery combination tool from advanced rescue systems. Soul source authorized dealer in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
This is from the grant money, is that right? Okay.
Yes, this is a rescue grant from the Texas State Enforcement Service, receiving earlier in the year.
When do you use the battery combination tool? I was just interested what we use an eight thousand dollar?
The combination tool, everybody knows the jaws of life that are spreaders. The other thing we have to do is cut metal. And we have a, we have spreaders and then on our large sets, we have cutters that are shaped, I call them a ring cutter. That, that cut very heavy things. The comedy tools are a spreader and then they have a blade on the inside to cut. So they're kind of like a, a pair of scissors when they cut. The battery operated is something that's fairly new to them. Uh, it gives us some power to go places that we can't go now because we're running off the batteries. We don't have to have the, the big power unit bigger thing every time.
Are you saying you can't cut with a dullie once? You know, if you get the letter just right, I bet you.
Some out paper.
That, that is.
Yeah.
Another motion, please.
Uh, personal purchase with TNT rescue tools. ESLCC dash two zero dash M two eight volt battery combination tool in advanced rescue systems. And soul source it, uh, authorized in the amount of eight one, eight, eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Sorry.
Another motion, and a second, all in favor, which right hand? Close. Thank you. Thank you. For sixteen employment items to consider natural on the following, you put it out on the road bridge. Resignation and twisting walls and the resignation of bed with the far road with six old doors. Any motion?
I approve that. I make a motion to approve it with the formalized instructions to make item A before.
I am. Second.
Motion, and a second, all in favor, which right hand? Four hundred and seventy-three people in our jail, seventy-five of those are female, no evidence of children, eighty-four percent felons, eleven percent minors. And Sheriff, would you like to give a summary report on our officer that was injured? Their name, that, that, that.
Nobody was, too far by, semi pulled up, for nobody's out there, probably working in traffic. People were just working and then down the road. Uh, seemed, uh, semi hit, hit the driver's side door. I'm gonna look at the single way, was sitting in, regular treatment from that to about that. Where you can see that, broke his hip bone or his pelvic bone, um, there, I think he's in love. Only because it's for the, under comm surgery, which is for that topic. Did that surgery on Friday. Doing better, should be back to the town hopefully next day. Very lucky.
He has some broken ribs too, I'm sure.
Three broken ribs up top. They're not affected by the, the lower ones.
You have a fundraising forum?
Right, so gonna have a, they're gonna have a cookout. That is just to help cover some of that.
And then, okay, there's some money, that's all that, that's the good thing. So he's gonna, I mean, recovery, but he's gonna be okay, sure?
Very, very lucky.
Yeah.
I got all the media's report back, but they said that normally in accidents. And within the car. Kind of one thing we, that, that credited the top.
And we will get that fixed, correct?
Where have you?
Thanks for the.
I'm sure it's total, some insurance will cover the cost of the new.
We asked, I asked the adjuster if she would just take it to the body shop. She's not allowed that.
That.
And we have what's left of.
Do you have any insurance out of other than that?
Uh, that's it. Everyone working, Debbie is working on the estimate to get that top replaced as soon as possible.
Okay. One quick note too, that our district clerk, Caroline, got the, you know, warrant about it at, at the district association, maybe, uh, Austin? Okay, no worry down. Of course, she's the district clerk, named district clerk of the year, so that's very, very common for her. We will recognize her next time and she, she used her daughter's wedding and. Yeah. So, um, now would you say you've searched any agenda documents for next time?
I have just a couple of judges and staff where I placed things, so I'm sorry for having you here. Uh, Scott, I don't know if we have an update from, uh, Ted. He was gonna check on the contract with the US department. Uh, and it was, US department, it was the, they're coming on the air force base location.
Right, I haven't heard the update on that yet.
I mean, we approved it, but he's gonna check.
Right, we have, I, I haven't heard back yet and Ted, of course, was out of company last week. It's the only thing that would have come in, would have been routed to the.
Okay, so maybe we can, that just does.
We'll keep going.
FYI. Um, and then Carrie, I know we looked at some draft, a draft policy on the road improvements. Um, and we could have some discussion around that. We didn't approve anything. I think you're gonna make some edits and then bring that back. Okay. Is, is that done? That project done? Oh, wow.
We, we just finished the soap. We will go back and follow and pull dirt on the edges, that's all, to go through the road.
If there's any pictures, that'd be nice for us.
We are gonna set up.
Let's say maybe we, I think that Ted has been talking to the Rock Road, he probably needs to set up another public.
The Rock Road, okay. And then the Walnut Hills, there was, that, that meeting happened this past week, Judge, with the text dot. Yeah, so I think there's a fairly good update. I don't know if we can hear that. No, it's not an agenda item, but I thought it was a good update.
Well, as far as Walnut Hills, uh, they're gonna start today. They threw it on us. But they said this, text dot told me they need to go to each individual house and then most before they actually start doing it.
Well, they've already moved the utilities.
I think it's been.
Actually all of our systems.
They're gonna take care of the entrance.
Okay. That's why I made it.
So we should pay expenses.
Some, some of those bridges, yeah, anyways.
They said that, uh, they're expecting to just be fifty-six days.
Wow.
It's gonna be a quick.
And the city's supposed to take the bridge, as far as we know, as far as.
Take the bridge and move it to a, so you.
They're gonna go to a couple of businesses and move it to, uh, a storage area and then a basement to the park.
They, I haven't heard of, we don't know, but we heard that we might go walking.
We have walking bicycles and that and stuff, yeah. But they, they haven't decided to park it now.
And they didn't invite the city to this meeting, so they were a little upset. Uh, we're waiting for the permit for the access and he said be here one to three days.
Judge, the last thing I have, and I have this on each one of our, our places, and there's some in the back. So this is a big, um, city initiative. I presented part of this at my town hall just because they are all in these meetings, these public meetings. So this is the city going out for public input on their, whatever's gonna make the, the, uh, the cut for the bond, for lack of a better word, this potentially November. Um, so they're going out to the public and asking what should make the cut. Uh, and so I attended one of the public workshops last week in North Amarillo. There's a lot of good participation, but they're handing out these brochures, so I wanted to make sure, certainly bring it to all of us here at Potter County. There's a website and email and a survey, so even if you can't attend one of these public meetings. Um, I think it's gonna be a huge undertaking, whatever lands in terms of a dollar amount and what makes the cut. So I encourage you to at least participate in the survey if you can't attend one of the public meetings.
One is, the survey's very, very short.
Two, two questions.
Very short, yeah.
Okay, that's all we are. Thank you.